Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Trup. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Eighteen I-votes.
By your vote, we suspend the motion on Alderman from the 20th and introduce floor substitute for Board Bill 171. Alderman from 20th, would you like to approach the mic?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for a perfection of the floor substitute for Board Bill 171.
Move by Alderman from 20th, second by Alderman from 24th. Any discussion? And a request for previous roll. There are no objection. Motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection informal.
With dispense with line items nine and 10. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 232, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller and the treasurer to enter into a ground lease with option to purchase with the South Grand Community Improvement District granting authority to take such further actions as are necessary to effectuate the ground lease and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 233, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance establishing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Logan Street at Lowell Street by regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Logan Street at Lowell Street and containing and regulating all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Lowell Street at Logan Street and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 234, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance authorizing and directing the fire chief on behalf of the city to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to fund a 2011 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response projects upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 235, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 4837 for property on end right containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 236, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property from B Two Family Dwelling District and H Area Commercial District to the H Area Commercial District only in City Block 1495 for property on Utah and McLean and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 237, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance to amend section 14.08.222 of the revised code by repealing said section and enacting in lieu thereof a new section relating to 3 a.m. closing permits and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 238, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1706 through 208 Carroll Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 239, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public surface right for travel on Virginia Avenue from Caroline Street northerly 320 feet to a point being the northern right-of-way line of Rutgers Street and a portion of Virginia previously, Virginia Avenue from Carroll Street southerly 124 feet to a point beginning at the northern right-of-way line of East West Alley in City Block 2157 North and 2166 in the city. Board Bill 240, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans existed, plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 241, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2912 Shenandoah. Board Bill 242, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen and ordinance pertaining to elections requiring that the disclosure of the donors to certain not-for-profit entities that make expenditures or contributions in support or opposition to a candidate for mayor, comptroller, president of Board of Alderman or a city of St. Louis ballot measure. Board Bill 243, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance dissolving the special allocation fund for 4391 through 99 West Pine Boulevard redevelopment project area. Board Bill 244, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance amending ordinance 67314 as amended by ordinance 68261, amending ordinance 67021 by reducing the interest rate on city tax exempt tax increment financing notes issued to Great Northern Bank for warehouse of fixtures redevelopment project and 4100 Forest Park redevelopment project containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the legislation committee. Board Bill 242, to the Streets Committee. Board Bills 233 and 239, to the Public Safety Committee. Board Bills 234 and 237, to the Housing Committee. Board Bills 235, 236, 240, 243, and 244, to the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill 232, and to the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bills 238 and 241. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill 198, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment pertaining to real property located at 1 North Jefferson Avenue establishing an earnings and payroll tax reimbursement account. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bills 202, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on McMillan at Marcus containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on College at the West Curb Line of Carter containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 204, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen and Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works improvement project for the design and construction of various roadway infrastructure improvements on Skinker between Clayton Road, Clayton Avenue and Oakland Avenue between Skinker and Hampton and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 205, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, Trup, and Boyd, Alderman Williamson, Boyd, and Trup, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works improvement project for the design and construction of the second phase of the Dr. Martin Luther King Pedestrian Lighting Project containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 216, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Arrendez at Dover causing it to be a three-way stop intersection containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 219, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Scanlon at Leola containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 220, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Tam at Smiley containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 226, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Prim Lane by blocking said traffic flow at the West Curb Line, Lane of Stoll Street. Board Bill 227, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Junietta at Clifton containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
Dispense with line item 14. Perfection. Madam Clerk, would you please move Board Bill Number 78 to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 51, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Cone and ordinance amending ordinance 64592 by modifying terms of real estate tax abatement for 3952 through 58 South Grand in the Gravois, South Grand Merrimack redevelopment area. Board Bill 133, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance approving an amended blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 210 North Tucker containing a severability clause. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance authorizing the execution of a development agreement between the city and Lord &amp; Taylor LLC and authorizing reimbursement to Lord &amp; Taylor LLC prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection therewith and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 158, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Cruzen and ordinance amending ordinance 64509 by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for the 5700 Oakland redevelopment area. Board Bill 178, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5200 through 40 North Second Street. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance pertaining to the Eastern Star Missionary Baptist Church located at 3117 St. Louis Avenue having as the subject matter the designation of the property as a city landmark containing definitions, design standards, severability clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderman Moore and Alderman French and ordinance pertaining to preservation review districts. Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance repealing ordinance 68999 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 19th Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 12th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 78, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and the ordinance adopted pursuant to Chapter 24 of the revised code extending the boundaries of the Hyde Park Historic District.
Alderman from 3rd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 78.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 78.
Move by Alderman from 3rd, and second by Alderman from 12th. Alderman from 3rd, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, Board Bill 78 is very, very important and it's so important that we give people an opportunity to see that there is something actually going on in North St. Louis. I hear so many complaints about people, from people, about those neighborhoods up there. But as you look at the Salisbury Strip, and you've been hearing me talk about that for almost 15 years down here, and it is on its way. Trust me, that Salisbury Strip is going to be one of the most visited areas in the entire city of St. Louis. And what we're talking about is expanding the historic district of the Hyde Park neighborhood, which gives people an opportunity to invest money and receive something back. Right now, there are close to $300 million worth of development going on in the Hyde Park area, and I would invite everybody who was in, can hear my voice, to go drive through there and see where you can invest some money, where you will make some money. Because you get about 40 cent back on every dollar you spend over there. So we're expanding the Hyde Park Historic District and it too is going to be one of the most dynamic places in the entire city of St. Louis. And I just would like to be able to let everybody know that although Salisbury and that strip along there is not where it's going to be, but look at it for what it was 10, 15 years ago and look at it now. In the next five, six years from now, you're going, everybody's going to want to come down there and move around that Salisbury Strip. So I move for perfection of the Board Bill.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, second by the Alderman from the 12th. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of placing the following Board Bills on the third reading consent calendar. Board Bill 51, committee sub. Board Bill 133. Board Bill 213. Board Bill 158. Board Bill 178. Board Bill 78. Board Bill 191. Board Bill 192. And Board Bill 206.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 6th, second by Alderman from the 12th. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Trup. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. I didn't hear. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-two I-votes.
By your vote, you suspend the motion of the Alderwoman from the 6th and suspended the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the third reading consent calendar. Third reading consent.
Board Bills 73, 98, 129, 142, 143, 139, 140, 141, 200, 201, 151, 186, 128, 150, 182, 183, 184, 144, 145, 146, 181, 147, 148, 149, 185, 152, 189. Fifty-one committee substitute. 133, 213, 158, 178, 78, 191, 192, and 206.
Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 13th, second by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Trup. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Twenty I-votes.
By your vote, you suspend the motion of the Alderman from 13th and third reading and final pass of the aforementioned bills. We also have with us today Senator Robin Wright Jones, who is also a state representative, my found friend. And part of the 6th Ward family, so thanks for joining us today, Senator. With dispensal line item 18, reported enrollment.
Board Bills 73, 98, 129, 142, 143, 139, 140, 141, 200, 201, 151, 186, 128, 150, 152, 182, 183, 184, 144, 145, 146, 181, 147, 148, 149, 185, 152, 189. Fifty-one committee substitute. 133, 213, 158, 178, 78, 191, 192, and 206.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 174, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy. The Board of Aldermen shall work toward the removal of the elevated lanes of Interstate 70 and their replacement by a suitable at-grade roadway upon the opening of the new Mississippi River Bridge.
Alderman from 24th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Number 174.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we refer Resolution 174 to the Transportation and Commerce Committee.
Move by Alderman from 24th, second by Alderman from 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Board Resolution 174 to Transportation and Commerce.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Dispense with line item 22. Miss Lyons, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Tuesday, Public Utilities Committee meeting, 10 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Thursday, the office will be closed Thanksgiving holiday. Friday, the office will be closed Thanksgiving holiday. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderwoman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone, there is a Ways and Means Committee meeting at 9 o'clock on Tuesday morning. If there are any Aldermen who have bills that would like to get them heard before the end of the year, this would be a great time to do it. So see Dave, and I'm sure he'll put your bill on the list. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The first thing I want to do, which is the most important, before I give you the announcements for the 19th Ward, I'm talking on behalf of the collection efforts by the License Collector's Office to send funds to victims of the horrible, horrible Sandy hurricane that pretty much devastated the East Coast. Now, one of the things that I know most of us have done, we've looked at the news, we thought about how bad it was, but we really haven't done anything to help people. So there's a collection being done, there are representatives here on the floor and also outside the chambers from the License Collector's Office, and I'd like to see this body make sure that we send a nice contribution towards that. So I'm going to make sure that I make the contribution first. And so if we just all put in $10 or $20, that would make a difference. And think about it, if you lost everything you had, I can't even imagine that. I mean, just to have nothing, to just turn around and have nothing. So I ask you to support this, and I hope that all will feel that it's in their heart to do so. Very quickly, I'd like to share with you my announcements for the 19th Ward. We've got a lot of stuff going on, of course. This Saturday at Kappa House, there will be a seminar for personal care survivors, which means that taking care of your adult members of your family or another sick member, or whatever it is that you need for personal care in your family, it will be held at Kappa House from 3 to 7 p.m. and I'm very excited about that and I'm going to try to make most of it. most of it. Also, on this Saturday, we have some fun going on at Dante's. You all know the radio personality Tony James, you know he's really into the stepping, and we're going to have our first local stepping contest here. And so they'll bop and everything else, but stepping, of course, is primary. So that'll be at Dante's from 7 to midnight, and that's 3225 Olive, and I hope that people have an opportunity to come by. I also wanted to share with you that next Saturday, on the Steve Harvey Dating Show, Robbie Montgomery is going to be selecting her a boat. So make sure you see that on Saturday the 24th, and I think that's going to be a lot of fun and give St. Louis again some more recognition. This Sunday, we're going to be honoring Dr. James Whitaker at Central Baptist Church. Most of you know Dr. Whitaker is 96 years old, and he still has it going on. So he will be recognized for all that he has done on behalf of the medical field and serving us here in this community, and also on a national level, being a representative in the medical field. They're having also on this Sunday at Washington Tabernacle, they're having an evening of chimes, and the choir's very good there, it's at 4 p.m. in the afternoon, and that's at Washington Tabernacle Church. And I'd also like to just start talking about Veterans Day celebration in the 19th Ward, and what we're going to be doing to recognize our veterans. There will be a play in their honor on December 1st, and veterans will be invited to come and watch this play called Real Life. They'll also get a meal and get some other things, but the VA Hospital at Cochran and the community are partnering to make sure that this happens. The play itself runs from November 30th to December 2nd at Grandell Theater, but we're honoring veterans on December 1st, and if anybody would like to donate some items or something, because most of them are homeless that come in, we want to make sure that we take good care of them on that day. I think that's enough for right now, but I have them for you next week. Thank you.
All right, that's a pretty busy few couple weeks.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, yeah. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the first, ninth, 16th, and 22nd words due to necessity.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10 a.m., November 30th.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 11th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, we stand adjourned.